Okay, good evening and welcome to the Cohasset Select Board Meeting of July 23rd, 2024, 7:00 PM. This meeting is being held at 91 Sawyer Street in Cohasset, Massachusetts, but it can also be viewed on Cohasset 143 Local Cable or Facebook Live. Interested parties may also join by utilizing the Zoom link at the bottom of the agenda. Please remember that this is a meeting held in public and it's not a public meeting. If you have any comments, please utilize the public comment section of the agenda and identify yourself with your name and address. Virtual comments will only be monitored on the Zoom link. And all speakers, please state your full name and address for the record. So at this point, I'd like a call to order. Mr. Grady?
Already present.
Mr. Farag?
David Farag, present.
Mr. Creighton?
Unmuted.
Jack Creighton, present.
Ellen Mar, present. Mr. Plex is on an airplane traversing the country as we speak. We'd like to invite everybody to join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic.
Thank you. Okay, public comment. Any public comment from the audience? Nope, any public comment? Nope, excellent. So our first item, we are ahead of schedule by four minutes. Jay, would like to welcome the new Superintendent of Cohasset Public Schools, Superintendent Sarah Shannon, and with her is Craig McCollum, Chair of the School Committee. Please come up. And we'll interrogate you. Got used to that. I'm sure through the process. We just wanted to invite you both here, welcome you to the district. I'm aware you're not new to the town, which is a good thing, and let you know that. Let it wait. And let you know that we're here to support the school district and your efforts and the school committee in a variety of ways Craig and I have talked about. We have our first joint meeting set up for next Friday, a meeting with yourself, Craig, Mr. Senior, and myself, and I think Chief Quigley is coming to this first one. And we'll start working on some collaborative ways to tackle FY '26. That'll be coming at us. Does everybody want to introduce themselves?
David Farag, Select Board. It's nice to meet you.
Nice to meet you as well.
Paul Grady, pleasure to meet you. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Yeah, I think you both have kids in the district.
You do.
He does, yeah. Mine are.
Yours are gone?
Yeah.
Mine are gone and one is back. And then Mr. Creighton is on Zoom?
Yeah, Jack Creighton. You know, hi Craig. Welcome, new superintendent. I had two daughters who went through Cohasset Schools.
Nice to meet you.
Thank you.
Craig has my contact details, which he's free to share with you if you ever have any questions or comments. I've kind of been around the block a few times and know this town fairly well, a little bit. And full disclosure, my son is a teacher in your district in the seventh grade.
My sons have either had him or been on his football team.
Oh, yeah.
So I think they both know him well.
Yeah, I am now officially Mr. Mar's mom.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So we just wanted to welcome you and say hello and let you know that we're here to support and anything that we can do for either one of you, you know, or the district or the committee. We're just a phone call, a text, or an email away. Is there anything you have for us or any questions or?
I would just like to say thank you. Thank you for inviting me to come tonight and to meet and say hello to all of you. I'm really excited about taking on this position and working for the town and the school community. It feels like it's the right thing for me to do at this point in my career, to be able to give back to a town that has given so much to me and my family. My husband has been in the town for a very long time, since he was a teenager, and my kids have had a fabulous experience and we have loved living here. I can't imagine living anywhere else. So to be able to do the work that I love in the town that I love feels really special. So I really look forward to meeting with you all and to working together for the good of the school district and for the town. I know we have a few meetings upcoming and look forward to starting to build those relationships together. So thank you very much.
Well, you're welcome.
I'm very jealous of you.
Yeah, me too.
It's been very nice. It's a nice shift for me.
It's great.
You were in Canton, right?
I was in Canton. So to go from about an hour to five minutes has been really a nice change.
I used to be in Cohasset and now I'm in Canton.
Okay. So you know.
I know, I know. Craig?
I have one thing.
Yes.
That's okay. I was going to say, for the benefit of the people watching at home who might not have watched the school committee meetings and the whole process of you getting hired, maybe you could just tell us briefly about your educational background and your experience that you've brought to Cohasset.
Sure, you're just about to do that.
No, thank you.
Absolutely. So I've been in education for over 20 years. I started my career as an English teacher. I was an English teacher in the middle school in Medfield. And when I moved to Cohasset, Medfield to Cohasset is even further than Cohasset to Canton. And so I ended up moving to Hingham where I taught again middle school English for three years. I was really fortunate to have a mentor and a principal who pushed me to move into administration. And so after working in Hingham at the middle school, teaching there, I moved and I was the Assistant Principal of the Duxbury Middle School. You'll see a trend. I'm a middle school person at heart. And I worked in Duxbury for four years. I then shifted and I was the middle school principal in Situate for five years. And that felt really close to home as well, not that Duxbury isn't, but Situate felt close because I had a lot of ties and connections and that was nice. Spent five years working there to build community and to really think about what teaching and learning should look like for students of our generation today and help to bring that new middle school to life and to fruition. And then with the work there, I was doing a lot with regard to project-based learning. And I wanted to really take on a new challenge and learn and grow myself. And so went to work for PBL Works, which is a national nonprofit that works with school districts across the country who are trying to bring project-based learning either to their school or to their district in a sustainable and transformational way. And so I worked as a school and district leadership coach for them for three years. I loved everything about it. And when you're a consultant, you don't always build those deep relationships. And so I missed that and my kids were getting a little bit older, so it was a little bit harder to be away so much. So I came back and I went to work in Canton. I was the middle school principal in Canton for three years, did that through COVID, which was a great experience in many ways and very challenging. And then moved into the Assistant Superintendent role. I was there for three years, had the opportunity while I was Assistant Superintendent to also do some long-term subbing as an elementary principal, which was a great view into the world of elementary school that I haven't had. And so that, along with all of my other experience, prepared me to be ready to move into a superintendent position and knew when I went to do that, I wanted to be back on the South Shore. And then the timing worked out that this position became open. And so to be able to do it here in Cohasset was a very fortunate stroke of luck for me. So I have loved everything about education, working in education. I also really love thinking about leadership and systems and how to take an organization from where they are. Cohasset is already a great district to continue to help it grow and make it better. And so excited to do that work here.
And I'd just like to add for anyone that's watching, so they know Superintendent Shannon was identified as a result of an exhaustive and extensive multi-month search process that was conducted in conjunction with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees, which helped us with consulting services for very low cost. There was a committee that identified the finalists and that committee was comprised of various stakeholders, including school committee members, administrators, staff members, faculty members, as well as family members from each level of our district. And once the finalists had been identified, there were a number of, and there were surveys throughout. It was a very community-centric process that was driven by community feedback and input. There were family forums, faculty forums, staff member forums, each building, and then district-wide finally, with the last step being the sort of open forum, sort of community-type interviews with all the finalists. We always received very positive feedback from Superintendent Nav, Superintendent Shannon. And we're very lucky to have her. Her middle school experience is, I think, uniquely suited for superintendent role to sort of get the best of both worlds there. And as she was discussing her experience of project-based learning, also helped, I think, distinguish her from her fellow finalists because education's really trending towards that. And moving away from more, you know, formal lecture-based instruction to more experiential-based learning, project-based learning, where she's directly actively participating in projects that emphasize the lessons, the underlying lessons, and help equip them with additional skills, but also a more robust understanding of the concept and a more memorable learning experience so that they can retain the information better. So she really checked all the boxes for us. And it was, like I said, many weeks, multiple months, and we are very, very fortunate as a community to have her. We're very lucky and we have all the confidence in the world that she will execute the duties of her role in an excellent fashion. So thank you for having her here and introducing her to the community.
Right. Great, well, thank you. Look forward to getting to know you and working forward, you know, schools and town together.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you. I look forward that not only are you going to continue the educational excellence in Cohasset, but also enhance the educational excellence in Cohasset as well. You have a great resume to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you all.
Thanks.
Thanks.
All right, so we have some events and licenses to go through. The first is the Holly Hill 5K Road Race presented for October 20th, 2024. Do we have anyone for that? Oh, okay.
Yes.
Please come up.
Thank you.
Identify yourself.
My name is Jonathan Belber. I live in Citrus, Massachusetts, and I work at Holly Hill Farm in Cohasset, located at 236 Jerusalem Road.
Okay, so this is a first-time event?
Yes, first time involving the streets and the environs around the farm. We've had a 5K probably six or seven years within the woods and private property on the farm.
Okay.
And now we're going out to the streets.
Okay. Okay, do you guys have any questions? Oh, we have Chief Quigley, any comments?
Excellent. Oh, hey there. Hi, everyone.
Hi, Jay.
Again, it's a new event. I've been working through the details along with the folks from Holly Hill and Traffic Safety Office. We get a good plan in place and we expect no issues or problems. And I received their insurance policy this afternoon.
Okay, and it's a two-lap route, is that correct?
Two-lap route, right. Living from the farm entrance down to right on Atlantic, past the beach, take a right. Not quite past the beach, right on Nichols.
Yep.
Go to the farm, Jerusalem, and repeat.
And repeat.
If the runner is able. Or the walker.
Right, Chief, will those roads be completely closed or just closed in one direction?
We're going to try to keep the runners on one side of the road, so it'll be closed. And it'll be open, but proceed with caution. And there'll be officers there on the course.
Okay, yes.
The only question I have, one of the questions I had was, would you do the notice to residents around the area?
We will send a notice in mid-August pending approval that a road race will be happening on this Sunday morning, the 20th. So we'll note by paper flyer to all the abutting residents on Lower Jerusalem Road there, Atlantic Ave, Nichols, and Jerusalem Road back to the farm. So they're aware of such an event.
Mr. Creighton, do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, well, first of all, nice to see we have another road race going on. You know, I probably won't make it, but anyway. The one question is that in the past, sometimes residents who are impacted might have emergencies and people might be planning to go to medical appointments. Do you have a phone number there that they can call to kind of make that easier? Or so they'll be given directions or this might be to Chief Quigley, if need be, a police escort?
Yeah, there's going to be five officers there, Jack. And usually people get word to us in advance, you know, especially with the notices going out door-to-door. So we can definitely accommodate people. That's why we have the extra help onboard. And, you know, we're absolutely willing to work with anybody.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, well, if there's no further comments or questions, I'd like to have a motion to accept the Holly Hill 5K Road Race on October 20th, 2024.
I would make that motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay, since Mr. Creighton's remote, every vote has to be a roll call. Mr. Brady?
Paul Grady, aye.
Mr. Farag?
David Farag, aye.
Mr. Creighton?
Jack Creighton, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. You're all set.
Thank you, good luck.
Thanks.
Great. Lovely.
Okay, next is the McCourt Foundation Tour to South Shore for September 21st, 2024. I believe this is a repeat event?
Yes, this one has been going on for a couple hundred years, it feels. It's, so Rosemary's here tonight to tell us about it. You know, it's a quality event. It's a relatively quick event. And I have to guess, it's at least 15 years that I've been coordinating with you guys. But I'll turn it over to Rosemary.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for the time. That's spot on. This is our 15th year. So the McCourt Foundation is a nonprofit that raises funds for neurological diseases. So this is one of our big fundraisers. So we do a 25-mile bike, a 50-mile bike, and then we have a 5K within Wampatack and Hingham. So the bikes take off from Wampatack and they travel through Hingham, Cohasset, Situate, and Orwell. We have the 25-mile bike is one loop and then the 50-mile repeats it. So it's the same course that we've had in previous years. The first one starts at 7:30 for the 50-milers. The 25-miler starts at 8:30. So we would expect the first biker would arrive to Cohasset no earlier than 7:45. Just in terms of numbers, last year we had, it was under 100 bikers total. We're expecting about the same this year. And then we have a finish festival at Wampatack. There's one water stop, which is at Egypt Beach. So no stops or trash or anything other than that. And we will have Cohasset Police Detail, which we get in touch with after the Labor Day holiday. We typically have between two and three police stationed kind of right at the Jerusalem Road start, at the whole Cohasset border, and then sometimes near the bridge. That's it.
Any comments or questions, Mr. Farag? Mr. Grady?
What is your name again?
Rosemary.
Rosemary, is Brian McCourt part of that?
He is, so he's the head of the McCourt Foundation.
I went to elementary school with him. I'd make a motion or approve.
I thought you were going to say deny, so, okay.
St. Paul's together. I just remember the name.
Yeah, so he started the McCourt Foundation. His parents were both affected by neurological diseases and.
I remember them very well, especially Mr. McCourt. And so, we hung out as kids, so I'd make a motion or approve.
Thank you.
Can you hold that motion? I just want to see if Mr. Creighton has any comments or questions.
No comments, except I'll second that motion.
Okay, so Mr. Grady has made a motion to approve the McCourt Foundation Tour to South Shore. Mr. Creighton has seconded it. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Grady?
Paul Grady, aye.
David Farag, aye.
Mr. Creighton?
Jack Creighton, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. You're all set, thank you very much.
Thank you, everybody.
Okay, next we have Soul Quench LLC DBA Quench Juicery. That's a lot to say. Sorry, for a common victualer's license. Is there anyone here representing? No?
Looks like it's next to Eans.
Yeah, I'm not sure. Where is 103 Ripley Road? Is that, that's not fresh.
It's right next to E was like green in front of it.
If I recall this correctly, that little juice, the juice that's there.
Oh, okay.
Switching owners, I think that's what it says.
It's switching owners, okay. Pressing the post office. Okay, and, yeah. Okay, Mr. Senior, is this typical to approve without representation?
It's an existing business and it's just changing ownership. We don't usually have, we don't have a lot of these happen.
Okay.
But we've had, and they're expected by the board health, that had no complaints that I'm aware of. And these are almost, these are done fairly, for an existing business, they're done fairly.
Existing business, but change of ownership. So it is, it is a little different, okay. Well, if nobody's.
If you want them here, we can ask them to come.
No, I'm just, I'm just asking what, you know, common practices. Does anyone have any comments or questions?
No, it's in an existing building, so it's.
It's pretty, okay.
Potential for any of the public involved to not be aye, so. Unlike a road race or something.
Right, right, right. Mr. Creighton, do you have any comments or questions?
No, I'm all set, thank you.
Mr. Grady, no? Okay, all right, so can I have a motion to approve the common victualer's license for Soul Quench LLC DBA Quench Juicery?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Farag has the second. Roll call vote, please. Mr. Grady?
Paul Grady, aye.
David Farag, aye.
Jack, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. Okay. All right, so that's what we have here for everyone to sign. All right, thank you. Okay, next up, Board Committee Interviews and Appointments. The first is the Affordable Housing Steering Committee, a request to change the makeup of the committee, which I think is Mr. Kears here to talk us through these changes?
Yes.
Okay. Do that first and then the interviews and appointments after.
Right. Paul Kears, 39 Old Town Road. I am the chairman for the Affordable Housing Steering Committee. And our committee's been around for quite a while. It was chartered by the Board of Selectmen. And at the time, the board set this up as a steering committee to help with the conformance to 40B for affordable housing for the town. And at the same time, we were instrumental in trying to get the trust set up so that we can have a trust in place to be able to do any financial transactions that needed to be done in order to move affordable housing across the town easier. So with that said, the original charter was set up to have seven voting members on the board. And over the last five or six years, we've had a tough time getting seven members to attend and also having, you know, four of them attend for the quorum.
Quorum, right.
With that said, there were two folks that generally didn't attend, and that was representative from the planning board because they are busy with the planning board, that they didn't have time to commit to attending our meetings. So what we decided to do there was have a volunteer from our committee attend planning board meetings. So that actually works out better for us and them because now we can select the meetings that are pertinent to affordable housing rather than every meeting. So that, that worked out pretty well. The Master Planning Committee, I don't think exists anymore. We also had a liaison from the Select Board we haven't seen in a number of years. And so where we are right now is we have had a quorum of four people that have been to every meeting. And what that represents is one position from Housing Authority, one position from Council on Elder Affairs, and then there's three open seats for citizens at large. So what we're looking to do is make a few changes to the steering committee charge that the Select Board had put in place. There's a couple of things that weren't in practice, but were in writing. One is that the committee, we never reported quarterly to the Select Board. So we did report from time to time, but it wasn't exactly quarterly. So two or three times a year, we would report, or as activity warranted, we would come in front of the Select Board. So we'd like to change that to annually, and that would be consistent with other committees and boards. So that is in one of the first changes that you'll see on the red lines that I had sent out. The positions that I stated, which would be the Housing Authority, Council on Aging, and then go from four to three citizens at large, that would make it a five-voting member committee. The other changes that we put in place is we don't have a planning director for the town. We have a town planner. So the town planner is our ex officio. She attends every board meeting. And because she's the town planner, it gives us insight into the planning board. So there was some redundancy there, so that, that made perfect sense for us to keep up to date with that. We defined her role as representing information to the committee, any updates from the planning board relative to affordable housing. So we put that change in place. We did strike a couple of other areas requesting that, you know, committees, appointments, and liaisons all be eliminated from that, that's in the red line that we presented to you because none of that happens. That's why we struck those from the charter. The last change that we wanted to make is that the committee is not large enough and it's a steering committee. So when it came to recognizing the requirements in the town Cohasset bylaws, we don't have a chairman, a vice chairman, or a secretary. So what we do is we go by the town bylaws, which is the town bylaw requires once a year that a chairman be elected. So that's the only position that the town requires. So that is the last change that we have that we would like to be put into place. So we're striking, choose a chairman, a vice chairman, and a secretary. No officer shall serve more than three consecutive years in the same role. So what we want to change that to is the committee shall recognize annually in accordance with the town Cohasset bylaws, a selection for those, for any chairman.
Okay, so you're going to add selection for chair?
Correct.
Okay.
Right, what we put in there was that we would, we would do that in accordance with the town bylaws. The town bylaws change will have that already.
Oh, I see what you're saying, okay.
So right now, the town bylaws require any committee board in the town to select a chairman once a year. That's it, no secretary, no clerk or anything. That's the position.
Questions, Mr. Farag?
No, I read, like I had sent. The only question I had is on the chairperson. Are you sure you don't want a vice chair because of the absence of the chair? Who would run the meeting?
We don't. Right now, what we do is we wouldn't have a quorum right now. So right now, we don't have a quorum, so it doesn't take that effect. So if we're down to five people, we just have a minimum of three. So right now, we have someone who takes the meeting minutes. We have a volunteer that'll do that for us. So whoever is there would be able to take charge of the meeting. And if the chair knows or can in advance say, I won't be able to make it tonight, we can select somebody at that point.
Mr. Grady?
Why don't you have a Select Board liaison? I'm on affordable housing, got three other committees, so why don't you?
So you're on the trust.
The trust.
We had one, and when we first started, we had maybe a couple of attendance by a Select Board member. But at that time, we were seven people and we were really never had a reason to have a Select Board member at the time because we were really trying to figure out where the town is on 40B. What is our housing stock? You know, where are we in getting to? What is our housing stock? You know, where are we in getting to where we need to be? That took us about, you know, two years to kind of sit through and figure out where we are. We didn't have any projects in front of us at that time. The focus was getting the trust set up. In order to apply for grants with the state. You have to have a trust set up in order to move without going to town meeting. You need to build quickly on some of these projects. So our focus for the first three years was, was really all of that. So there really wasn't much input we needed from the Select Board, but we did keep them up to date because we would come to a Select Board meeting and say. This is what we're trying to do. This is where we're moving forward. So the first thing that we did was. We entered into. A transaction with the trust in which 808 Jerusalem Road was owned by the town. And we had worked with the Select Board and the town manager on putting that on the town warrant. To have that property transferred to the trust. So that took quite a bit of work to do. So once that was done, then the trust. Basically kind of activated what they do, and that is put the property out for bid for the sole purpose of building affordable housing. And we were involved in that. We're still involved in that today. Right now, 808, I don't know if anyone's been by there, but the foundation is in and the first floor is, is up.
Right.
So. Our committee has been working with Habitat for Humanity. They attend our meetings. At least once a month, we have our meetings and they've been attending. And we've, we've done a lot of events together and coordinated what we need to do for. All of the, the folks who want to volunteer and work on the site. So that's been moving very, very well. So we've been very active in those areas. We've been very active in other projects that we have ongoing.
The reason I ask is because of all the good work these guys are doing. Don't like to think of being treated like a, you know, a cousin.
Yeah, I have some.
Left out cold.
Yeah, I have some thoughts on that.
Yeah. And so that's why I asked you that question. It wasn't anything towards Europe. It's more.
Right, right. It's more towards us, yeah.
The Select Board got involved when we identify a property. And once you identify a property. There's a lot of opinions that need to be gathered about the property in question and then. Kind of decide if it's worthy to move forward with a project. So that's usually when the Select Board is involved.
Also, sure, so the planning as well.
Planning, yeah.
Representation there.
That's, that's correct, yeah.
All right. So thank you so much for that.
Mr. Creighton?
Yeah, thank you. Mr. Kears, thank you. Well done. I remember I was on the. Affordable Housing Committee when we first realized that if we identified something, which in this case was 808 Jerusalem Road. We had no place to put it, even though we were required. So it's been a, a bit of a journey and it's been a successful one. I like the idea of consolidating a little bit. One of the things that we find in, in the governance of our town is that we frequently do need to revisit how we've set it up to make it match with the resources available. Which basically meaning the volunteers available. The only concern that, that I have is. That I'm a believer that you should make sure that there's some kind of term limits on the chairman. Chairman role, because it's very easy for it to become self-perpetuating. I know I was chair for years of the Conservation Commission. And I noticed that after a while you kind of become entrenched and everybody defers to you, which. Is not healthy. So I, I guess my question is, have you considered having for has a, a three-term term limit? They have to step down for a year, then they could come back. But I think that would really be very, very healthy to keep the fresh blood churning.
Um, food for thought. So, Mr. Kears, thank you very much for the red line. It was very easy to go through and see the changes. We do get documents where it says this is the new and you have to look up the old. And so I appreciate it very much. Thank you. Consolidating down from seven members to five, it's not something we haven't heard from other committees before for the exact reason of it's a challenge to find. You know, to get a quorum several times. I think your approach to having a liaison to the planning board as opposed to a planning board representative probably serves you better in, in that sense. And with regards to the Select Board liaison and/or what had been. Quarterly reports. You're not alone. There are a lot of committees charged with reporting to the Select Board and we don't see them. And for a variety of reasons and it's. We're going to try to get back because it's my belief. We can only make the best decisions if all the people who are volunteering in various capacities throughout the town. Share with us the fruits of their labor, and it is labor. And so if you ever have anything you'd like to talk about, please reach out. We'll put you on the agenda. Whether it's a scheduled formal meeting or an update, we'd be very, very happy to hear. Hear from you and, and your committee.
Sure. We, we definitely have done that. Like I said, as the projects present themselves, we've been coming in front of the Select Board to, to make sure that. I do want to recognize that our entire committee is here. So.
Okay.
Beth Tarpe is here. Mary Hines is here. And Susan Sardina is remote.
Okay.
She has COVID, I believe. So she is, she is remote somewhere. Here. And. We did have our, our monthly meeting, which was at 4:00 PM today.
Okay.
So we did spend an hour there. Our town planner was there as well, and she's there at every meeting. So we're, we're pretty in tune with, with things at the town hall, with the town manager. Has been working very well with us on a, giving us an idea of, you know, what direction we should head to or, you know, what kind of roadblocks we run into. We've also gone to the building inspector to say, hey, what do you think of this piece of property? So it's been working really well. How we are.
I do have a question. Mr. Senior, with regards to Mr. Creighton's point about term limits on. I believe he said it was the chair's position. I mean, isn't, we don't have anything in the bylaws. Prohibiting a chair from serving consecutive. Terms.
The bio, the only term limit that's, that's in the bylaws is now the advisory committee. And that's how long it serves, period.
Period, right.
And then the Conservation Commission has adopted its own rules at one point, which is fine, and they require a rotation.
A rotation of the chair position, but not dropping off and then coming, okay. Okay.
Again, the board can choose to do that at charge if you want.
Okay.
Yeah, I could clarify that. Yeah, there was no intention to say you had to get off the committee. We just said rotation was, was a good word. And that is the decision made by the Conservation Commission is not the town bylaw. And the Conservation Commission at it. Can revisit that anytime. They did feel that it was useful or, or helpful. But my only suggestion on that is, and I would really defer to. The Affordable Housing Committee, what you want to do about that. But I, I found it very, 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 very healthy. So I just asked that you perhaps at your next meeting, discuss it and see if it works for your committee.
That, that will be up to you and your colleagues.
Correct, yeah. So it's such a small committee that having term limits doesn't make sense for us.
Right.
Every year in, in May and June, we ask, does anyone want to be the chair? So.
Everyone sits on their hands.
One sits on their.
Short straw.
Yeah. So it really is based on, you know, who has the time.
Was the time, right, right. I under, I understand. All right. So our first act of business then, if everyone. I'd like to have a motion to accept the changes as presented to the Affordable Housing Steering Committee charge.
I would make that motion.
I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay.
And also thank you, Mr. Kears. As far as I do know, you guys feel like that.
We are, yeah, we work directly with the, as you know, the trust as well.
Okay. So we have a, we have a motion and we have a second roll call. Mr. Grady?
Paul Grady, aye.
David Frog, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
L M R, aye. Okay, excellent. So now we have, so that was the change of makeup of the committee. And now how many? How many new, forgive me?
So there are no new positions.
We have one seat open, correct?
Technically, yes, we do. So right now. With the five positions that we have, three being residents at large. Susan Sardina is a board member. She had been with the Housing Authority. She is no longer with the Housing Authority. So she is filling the seat of the Citizen at Large. Which leaves the Housing Authority position open, in which the Housing Authority representative, who is going to. Fill that seat is Fred Coit.
Okay, so then in terms of the applicants for the one seat that's open for Citizen at Large. Correct? We have Stephanie Saunders and Susan Sardina?
Correct. Susan has already been appointed. So. She's been, she's been appointed already to a three-year term. The term expires in 2025.
Okay.
She no longer represents the Housing Authority. So she's, she filled the vacated seat for the.
Okay, understood.
So the only open seat technically is the Housing Authority.
Okay. And of which there's, there's one candidate for one.
I mean, so typically, if someone's representing another entity, the entity usually communicates that to the board saying this is our recommendation. I don't know that we have anything in the Housing Authority that you do. I mean, I just, that says that they want to have Fred in place.
Yeah, so we, we presented that. Think about a year and a half, about a year or so ago, or a year and a half ago when it changed. To the Select Board, so.
I, 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 I don't know that that actually happened.
Okay.
Because I don't think it's on the committee now.
She's on the committee, she was sworn into it.
No, 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 she is. No, no. But she was representing the Housing Authority.
Correct.
Because she's not representing the Housing Authority. Her seat is technically vacant. She's no longer there.
Okay.
So I think it's just process, right? So, so if, if Fred is going to represent them, the Housing Authority normally would say, hey, that he's our recommendation for the seat.
Oh, okay. And we have no such recommendation.
I don't, I'm not aware. I mean, again, Paul may have communicated with them and I'm not.
We did, we, we submitted it to the Select Board because this is. One of the changes that we made when we couldn't get a quorum. And then when the Housing Authority made their changes, we requested that Susan fill the vacant. The vacancy that we had. And that the Housing Authority would. Point somebody.
So I'm a little confused. So Ms. Saunders, you applied for? Yeah. All right. So then that now is no openings for her to serve?
Well. From Affordable Housing Steering Committee, this is. What has been in practice for the last two years. So the, the. We understand that the Select Board did approve moving her to the open seat. But when I contacted the clerk's office. She had sent me the active members list and still has Susan listed as the Housing Authority.
Okay.
So, again.
I. I think we need to go back and find out when we approved. Moving her from Housing Authority to Citizen at Large.
At Large, because that's the one Ms. Saunders applied for, correct?
Correct.
So, so we didn't get a chance to interview her, speak to her. That's I'm a little puzzled by that because you have somebody, I mean, we need people on committees, as you all know.
No, I did, I did speak with her a couple of times. I did mention to her that. Our positions were, were full that we were aware of as, as a committee. Where Susan was filling that and then the Housing Authority had the representative, weren't sending a representative to us. So we still had our quorum of four people. So at this point, I guess we would need some clarification from the town clerk or from the Select Board. I don't know if the Housing Authority had submitted anything on behalf of Fred Coit to the Select Board.
Yeah, there's nothing, nothing in our packet other than Mr. Coit's application.
So he did submit an application?
He submitted an application. But it did not, forgive me, I'm sorry. I don't believe it indicated specifically for the Housing Authority representative seat.
Okay.
I don't know that it should have. I, but I'm.
Okay.
It would, it would make things easier, you know. For, for us. So I think we need to defer this until we can validate if the Select Board did in fact approve the change. As you indicated, and we have all of our meeting minutes. It's very easy to, to, to research. And then we'll put this on for the next agenda.
Terrific.
Okay.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's on us to, you're free to interview her.
Oh, sure. We'd love to.
Susan's here. Susan, our Sardina is on remotely, I believe. And Stephanie is here. And is Fred here?
Is Mr. Coit on? Okay. Okay.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Would you like to come up and? Hi.
Hi, Steph.
Hi. Hello.
So great suggestion that while you're here, why don't you just tell us a little bit about yourself and your interest in the Affordable Housing Steering Committee?
Sure. So I actually offered.
See the name and address.
Oh, name and, name and address, please. Stephanie Saunders, Ken Stratford Terrace.
Okay.
So I actually had offered to serve on the committee as a resident or as a ex officio town employee. Social worker for the Health Department. So I, I know things are being sorted out now, but I wanted to throw that out there. Knowing there's potential two hats to be played. As a resident, obviously, I would not be representing the town. So I am a social worker for the last 17 years. Mostly working in communities and helping folks find and locate resources. So I was interested in kind of joining this committee just because of my work. You know, I think I've really seen the impact of affordable housing and lack thereof in the community and how that really impacts people. And what these things mean at the personal level. So I just thought I might be able to bring that voice to the committee. That may not be there. In that field right now.
Okay, sure. Questions?
I think that you could bring something. That's our promise. We don't have people stepping up to the board.
I know, I know. I know. Mr. Frog?
We did receive your application, did read it. But for the people, people at home, and you talked about your professional experience. If you could tell your educational experience as well.
Sure. I have a master's in social work from Fordham University, 2007. And have worked about 10, 10 years of my career. I was at the VA. And I've also worked at Mass General, at the Shattuck Hospital. And recently been working for the town for about four years. First for Elder Affairs and now for the Health Department. But I cover actually a regional role of situat, Pingam and Cohasset. Is my coverage area, so. Said enough. Sure.
Yeah. Are there any other? I mean, as Mr. Grady said, I mean, we, we're constantly looking for people to fill boards and committees. Is there anything else in town that's of interest to you?
Um, that's a good question.
Trust as well.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know if there was anything open. Yeah, I didn't, I didn't know if there was anything open. I'm, I'm very open. I, I, all I really want to do is help town resident for twelve years. I care a lot about the town and the residents. So I am very open and certainly don't want to, you know, if there's already, I don't, I think with the change of the seats, you know, the openings have changed, so I would not want to take a seat from someone else. I just want to help as much as I can.
Do you like Town Hall?
Fortunately, my, I am funded through the state, so I'm not fixed with those, those problems personally, although my, my colleagues are.
I think he has other motives than asking the question. Mr. Creighton, do you have any questions for Ms. Sanders?
No, except to say thank you very much for stepping forward.
Okay. We, we have your application, and like we told Mr. Kirsch, we have to look back and see exactly what we did or didn't authorize. And then we will reconvene and be in touch, you know, for when, when we're ready. And if you're interested, feel free to reach out to myself or anyone here about other opportunities. We, we do, this Kevin put out a great flyer. I mean, we have about a hundred, about, we have about thirty boards and committees to fill with an average of five people. It's a hundred and fifty people, which you'd think wouldn't be hard, but there are a lot of people in multiple positions on multiple boards. So we greatly appreciate you applying for this, and it, we want to get you in somehow. Well, I want to get you in. I can't speak for everybody, but yeah.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we're going to pause on that.
Susan Sardina, one more?
Oh, yeah, we have one more.
Oh, okay. Sorry, thank you. Ms. Sardina there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, thank you. I have COVID, so I have a kind of a froggy voice, I'm sorry. I just wanted to say that for about fifteen years, I was on the Housing Authority. And it was in that capacity that I initially got involved with the Affordable Housing Steering Committee. And Jack, I remember serving on it with you several years back now. And things have moved along, and I have been intimately involved with 808 Jerusalem, with the Habitat for Humanity House that's going up over there. And I'm very excited to see that happening. It is the first new build of affordable housing as an individual-type dwelling, which is a duplex in the town in the nineteen years since we've lived here. So I'm very excited to see that happening. And I initially, as I said, was serving in the capacity of the representative from the Housing Authority. But then when I went off the Housing Authority, they didn't have another representative, apparently, from the Housing Authority at the time, who wanted to be on the steering committee, and since I was already on it, I, I kind of slid, I guess, into one of the openings that was still unfilled for the members at large. So I have been now on the Affordable Housing Steering Committee for several years. I don't know, I would say maybe eight. I'm not, I'm not positive. But I have found great pleasure in my involvement with it, and I'm very proud of what we have accomplished and what the town is doing with affordable housing. So I hope I will be able to remain on and keep doing some good work for the town. Thank you.
Thank you. Any comments or questions? No. Okay. All right, so we have our plan on how we're going to handle this. Next up is the Alternative Energy Committee. It's a three-year term, there's one seat open. We have Steve Weller, who is looking to be reappointed, and Ms. Sardina again has applied for this committee. Is that correct? Yep, that's correct. There's one seat open, and Steve Weller is the reappointment.
Yeah.
Well, there's one seat open.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, there's, there's Ms. Sardina has an application. So while you're still on the phone, are you still there?
I am.
Yep, you want to talk to us about your interest in the Alternative Energy Committee?
Yes, absolutely. I frankly had not heard back from anyone, so I didn't know if you ever received my application, and if it was all official, or if it was just something that I had sent in and hoped that it got to you. But I feel that our environment is, is threatened, and I feel very proud of Cohasset for what it has been doing in the alternative energy area. Both my husband has a an electric vehicle, I have a plug-in hybrid, we're trying to do our part, we've put in a unit I forgot what they're called, that helps with air conditioning and heating. And yes, thank you very much, a heat pump. Exactly, we did that about three years ago, and it has been very efficient. So I would like to be involved with what the town is doing to try to get the word out about all of the different ways that people individually can also get on the bandwagon to try to help to reduce our energy load in terms of electrical output. So when I had spoken to Debbie Cook about this a while back, I expressed an interest, and so that's, that's where the application has come from.
Great, thank you. Any questions from the board? No. And then is Mr. Weller online? He is not, and that's a reappointment. Does the Select Board have any comments or thoughts to we, on reappointing Mr. Weller or appointing Ms. Sardina?
I would make a motion to appoint and reappoint.
Oh, there, there's one seat open.
Sardina to the committee, and the other gentleman to reappoint.
But there's only one seat open, right?
No, did you say two? I thought we had, I thought we had an open slot. Oh, my mistake.
Madam Chair, if there is only one position open and the current member would like to be reappointed, I will defer.
Well, I apologize for that confusion, so I would make a motion to reappoint. Oh, sorry.
Before we go, I, I just want to double check, guys, per the Town Board, that in 2024, there's only one and not two up.
Yeah.
Or was, or was there a fill?
Database of the clerk uses to maintain the base records is, is not doing great at the moment. So, but this is as far as tracing was able to discern, and Maria then translates to us. If there is indeed a second seat open, I, I, I'm not aware of that, but if there is, you can always come back and add that person. But this is what we're seeing as of the time.
So the listing on the town website under the AEC, it only shows one term ending in 2024, and that is Mr. Weller's position.
All the committees aren't set up in a staggered way, some of them are.
Well, that could be great. Twenty-four, twenty-five.
Yeah.
Three, four, twenty-six.
He's going to, we're showing that too, there's.
Yeah, I would, I would, I would say this is the most updated. So for the members out there, the composition of the AEC on the town website, on their page, shows that there's one position open for the term ending in right now, and that's Mr. Weller's spot, and he has applied for reappointment. I'm sorry?
She is.
So he started, Mr. Grady started a motion? Yeah, I think we finished deliberation on this. Ms. Sardina said she would defer to reappointing the existing member who would like to be reappointed. So do I have a motion to reappoint Mr. Weller to the Alternative Energy Committee?
I will make that motion.
Thank you. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, roll call, please.
Paul Grady, I.
David Frog, I.
You're mute, Jack?
Jack Creighton, I.
Ellen Mar, I. Okay, Mr. Weller, Ms. Sardina, thank you for your grace, and we appreciate it.
When there's another opening, you'll hear from me. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, the next is the Conservation Commission, three-year term, there are two open seats, it looks like there are two applicants. Mr. Tom Bell is looking for a reappointment, and Mr. Magnell has applied. Do we have either one in the audience? Oh, there he is. Mr. Bell, would you like to come up? Oh, Mr., I'm sorry. I'm sorry? Okay, would you like to come up, please? Name and address?
Stephen Magnell, 58 Howe Road.
Q? Why don't you just tell us briefly why you'd like to be on the Conservation Commission?
Interested in conservation for a while, and Tom Bell asked me if I would be interested in this. Be glad to do that. We've done a lot of work in, in, in some conservation, right? Mostly volunteering for the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service.
Oh, yeah. That's a good idea.
I'm sorry.
Turn this around. Well, thank you.
I've got a loud person, so it's not often. We've, we've spent probably five years volunteering for the winters, doing work with endangered species in Arizona and in Texas. Both, both birds and, and fauna, flora, rather, mostly doing surveys of cactus, salad, desert plants. Here, we've not done very much during my working years, so I was traveling a lot, so my wife, on the other hand, was a member of the Conservation Trust, the director of the Conservation Trust for several years, and historical commission for several years, as she was here and I was not. So I figured it was, it was a good time, I'm retired now for, for a while. And it was that's probably as best I could say.
Okay. Any questions?
I, I was going to ask, while we do have your application, for the people sitting at home and watching it tonight, if you could also tell us your educational background as well.
Oh, I've got, I've got a green chemistry, which I actually never use. I worked for my entire career in, in software development for some number of high-tech companies, including the last three years before, before I retired, was a startup in New Zealand, so.
You like trees, you like water.
Like water, we travel a lot, we do a lot of outdoor camping, we are interested in, I've helped Tom on a couple of projects of his, and yeah, that's where we are. I was also, I was also a, a member of the Aquarians Consumer Water Advisor, while they were still the water supplier for North Cohasset.
Oh. Hi.
Town of Hingham's not interested in us, yeah.
Mr. Creighton, do you have any comments or questions?
No, thank you for stepping forward.
Okay. I have, I have no questions. Thank you very much. Okay, so.
Just, just for covering the board, I was just double checking, so Mr. Magnell's applying for the associate members slot, because that's, that's vacant.
Whatever they claim.
Yeah, yeah, right, and then, and then Mr. Bell's applying for reappointment, he's the current chair.
Okay.
Can I, can I suggest that Mr. Magnell be appointed as a full member? We are very short. And an associate member has no vote. We have-
I'm sorry, I'm, I'm sorry.
That's Tom.
Okay, you, please identify yourself with your name and your address, please.
All right, Tom Bell, sixty-three, Howe Road. And my comment is that we are short an associate, but we are also short two full members. And we are having issues with forming a quorum. So we strongly urge you to appoint Mr. Magnell as a full member. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay.
I'm trying to, as I understand the committee, and I could be wrong, there's seven full members and two associates.
Yep.
Right?
No, it is.
We're showing
you need to ask Mr. Bell by the process of elimination, not on the committee, and that would be the quickest way.
Well, it, it, Mr. Bell? You hear me? Okay, so I have you as a full member, or we're looking for reappointment. I have Mr. McIntyre as a full member?
Yes.
Mr. Farland as a full member?
No.
Oh, is he off now?
That's the 2024 slot.
Okay, so, oh, so he's not, right, he's not sticking with you.
That's correct.
That's your full slot?
There you go, there are two, two, so.
Okay.
You can appoint him as a full member.
Would you like to be a full member? Okay.
Gladly.
Okay, great. So can I have a motion to reappoint Mr. Tom Bell and appoint Mr. Magnell both as full members to the Conservation Commission for three-year term?
I'll make that motion.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, roll call, please.
Paul Grady, I. And thank you.
David Frog, I.
Jack, I.
Thank you. Ellen Mar, I. Thank you both very much for your volunteering. We appreciate it.
May I speak again?
Sure.
Yeah, we have another member who has left, and that's, so there's actually one more opening, and I saw that Ms. Sardina didn't quite make it for her appointment. I think she'd be a great member on Conservation Commission. Unfortunately, she's probably off the meeting. If she's still on, maybe she can jump in and, and be appointed.
Well, for the next agenda, we still have to resolve the Affordable Housing Steering Committee, and we don't have an application for the Conservation Commission.
I'll speak to her personally.
We need an application, thank you.
Since I have her for a second, can I just confirm a couple more members?
Yeah, absolutely.
Sure, sure, but, but can I, I just want to finish this point, though. So if she would like to apply to be on Conservation Commission, we would certainly entertain it at the next meeting.
Excellent.
I have Kathleen Barrett as a full member?
Yes.
And Paul Lazuri? He's an associate member or full member?
An associate member.
We have Valeria Urbana as a full member?
Yes.
I have Sanjay Fernando as a full member?
Yes. That leaves us one short. Will Ashton left for, I don't, I don't know quite how he arranged his leaving, whether he resigned or what, he'll be back in a year, but we could certainly use a member to replace him.
Yeah. So, so this is a seven?
So it's, I guess, so it's one, it was one full member and one associate member, open.
Open, right. This, this is a seven-member committee?
Plus two.
Plus two. Yeah, okay, okay, great, thank you. Okay, moving along. The Cohasset Harbor Committee, we have three full members for a three-year term. One member from the Center for Student Coastal Research as a representative, one member from the Cohasset Maritime Institute representative for a three-year term. And Mr. Donsey withdrew his application. We have Mr. Michael, is it Sardina or Sardina?
Sardina.
Sardina, sorry, I, I apologize, I say it wrong every time. Looking for a reappointment, Mr. Baumgartner looking for a reappointment, and Ms. Hewitt-Dick looking for a reappointment as the representative from the Cohasset Maritime Institute. Is that, that's correct? That's correct, thank you. Okay. So it appears we don't have a representative applicant for the member from the Cohasset, from the Center for Student Coastal Research as representative. from the Center for Student Coastal Research as representative. That's correct? Okay. However, that's one of the positions that's open. So I'm confused on three reappointments and one of the positions isn't.
We have George, the chair's on the line.
Yeah.
Okay, can I, I'd like to finish my question and then I'll address Mr. Baumgartner. I'm just looking to Maria to make sure that I'm interpreting this correctly.
I, I think one of these other members represents the Cohasset Center.
Okay.
It wasn't clear on their application.
Okay, all right. So Mr. Baumgartner, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes. So would you just state your full name and address, please?
Yes, George Baumgartner, two sixty Forest Avenue.
Okay.
So yes, I'm currently the chair. At our next meeting, we'll hold elections for that position. My understanding is that I am applying for reappointment for an at-large position. Mike Sardina has also been in an at-large position and is applying for reappointment. Lisa Hewitt Dick is representing CMI. She's applying for reappointment.
Yeah.
Our CSCR position, Susan Bryant, I believe she wants to be reappointed, but had she, you know, apparently and obviously has not gotten her application in. So that position is open and is not represented by any of the members we've just discussed.
There's actually three citizen-at-large positions open, plus those other two, so there's actually five seats.
There's five seats open. Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
Okay. Would you like to make any comments?
No, I mean.
One, I did, I'm sorry, Mr. Baumgartner, I just invited Ms. Hewitt Dick up to.
Oh, thank you.
Good evening. Thank you, Adam Chair and members of the Select Board. I just want to thank you for giving CMI and other groups a chance to have representation on this. I know it's by law, but I think it's really important. And I know David Frog has mentioned people like to know people's credentials. I've been a practicing attorney for thirty-eight years. I have a pretty much of an expertise in governance. I chaired the Governance Subcommittee of the Harvard Committee. I'm the General Counsel for statewide agency. But for about twelve years, I got away from my present job, which was a public defender job, and I worked in a small firm in Cohasset, and I did land use. And I did a lot of work throughout the harbor, looking at title issues surrounding the harbor. I really are dedicated to trying to preserve the treasures that we call Cohasset Harbor. We've been very active in, under the Harvard Committee in writing the first master plan and working on the bylaws, recommendations. And I think that we have a lot of work to do, and I'd like to be part of that. But we also, as you see, have, needs a couple more appointments, which we hope to get more interest in people to apply. So thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Mr. Baumgartner, did you have anything to add to your application?
Uh, thank you.
Nope. And is Mr. Sardina there? No, okay. So since there's, these three spots are fine and we still have two open spots, okay. So can I have a motion to appoint, to reappoint Mr. Michael Sardina, Mr. George Baumgartner, and Ms. Lisa Hewitt Dick as a reappointment from the Cohasset Maritime Institute to the Cohasset Harbor Committee?
I'll make that.
So moved.
Mr. Grady made the motion. Mr. Creighton, did you second?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay, before we vote, yes.
Before we vote, I would just say for the record that way back when I was once a law partner of Lisa Hewitt Dick. So on that particular one, while there's certainly no conflict, I would just abstain from that vote, but I can vote on the other two.
Okay.
So if you want to redo the motion.
Yeah, so we need a motion to withdraw the motion.
Yeah, I'll make a motion, withdraw my motion.
Need a second?
Second.
Okay, roll call.
All ready, aye.
David Frog, aye.
Jack, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. Okay, make a new motion to appoint Mr. Michael Sardina and Mr. George Baumgartner to reappoint them to the Cohasset Harbor Committee.
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Mr. Frog, all in favor, roll call, please.
All ready, aye.
David Frog, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. Okay, can I have a motion to appoint Ms. Lisa Hewitt Dick as a reappointment from the Cohasset Maritime Institute representative to the Cohasset Harbor Committee?
I'll make that.
So moved.
Okay. We have a motion and we have a second. Roll call, please.
All ready, aye.
David Frog abstain.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. Okay. Everyone is in. Great, thank you very much, everybody. Okay, moving on, the Historical Commission, we have two members, two seats, is that correct? Okay, Ms. Susan Hoadley and Ms. Carol Bestick, are either one of them here? I'm sorry? Okay, if you, do you have anything to say or is? Well, come on up.
I'm best by Bydewitt Street.
Welcome, thank you for coming. Thank you for applying.
I got interested in it because I was sitting this summer talking with Merle Brown. He was my neighbor. And I realized when I looked at the list, he was no longer going to be able to serve because he's now either in Ohio or Falmouth. And I really felt bad about that, so I wanted somebody from the neighborhood to still be there. I have a associate's, or have a certificate in accounting, I have an associate's in accounting, I have a bachelor's in accounting, and I have an MBA. I also belong to the New England Historical Society, the Alden Kindred, and the Mayflowers. And I'm very, very interested in history and I want to make sure everything is preserved. And I also have one of the oldest houses in town, which is built in seventeen fifty-seven, which is one of the Pratt Houses. So.
Very interesting. Any comments or questions from the board?
Two open seats.
Two open and two seats?
When I saw, when I saw Merle's name on the list, I said, I know he can't because he's, he's not, yeah, he's not doing well. He's not doing well at all.
Sorry to hear that.
Me too.
Okay, so can I have a motion to, thank you very much. Thank you for taking, and you volunteering. Can I have a motion to approve, to appoint Ms. Susan Hoadley and Ms. Carol Bestick to the Historical Commission?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
All ready, aye.
David Frog, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. Thanks very much, okay. Two more left. Open Space and Recreation Committee, three open seats. And it looks like we have two that are looking to be reappointed and two that are new, is that correct? For three seats. Is anyone, Mr. Jason Culpa here? Is anyone online, Kevin? Okay, the two reappointments, okay. Okay, all right, so Ms. Afshar, you want to introduce yourself with your name and address, please?
Sure, my name is Connie Afshar and I live at one forty-one South Main Street in Cohasset. And I am currently co-chair of the Open Space and Recreation Committee.
Okay.
So my understanding is that my term, I need to reapply for a reappointment, and also that Marissa Manley, a member of our committee, also needs to reapply. And we also would like to ask for a new associate member, Ginny or Virginia LeClaire, to join our committee.
Okay, so do we have two full? So the two reappointments are two full members?
Yeah, there's actually three terms up. Marissa Manley's, Deirdre Riley did not reapply, and Connie Afshar, their terms are all up.
What I can say is that when I received the information from Tracy, I saw my name and I saw Marissa Manley's name. I did not see Deirdre Riley's name as a person whose term was due to be up.
Well, I'm sorry?
But that'll be a sentence.
Yeah, so our database that the town clerk keeps indicates that Ms. Riley's term is up and she's indicated on the website as a planning board representative. And then. Okay.
All right, and I believe you have the application from Virginia LeClaire to join us. If we had a full seven members, she would be joining us as an associate member. And if we are short a member, she could join us as a full member.
Is that what you show?
I don't show any associate members.
We don't, yeah. We don't show any associate members on this, on this committee?
Doesn't mean the board could create them, but you don't currently have.
Yes, no, I had a conversation with Tracy Connor, and she absolutely said that because we are an advisory board, that we could have an associate member if the need arose because the interest in participation rose above the allotted members we were allowed to have.
Well, we never want to discourage participation and we appreciate all the volunteers, but I think it's a tad more complicated to add an associate member to a committee, but we'll look into that. So we have, we have two reappointments and then two applicants for one spot. And we don't have either one of the new applicants present.
I am here online. This is Ginny LeClaire.
Oh, okay, so sorry. Would you just state your, your address as well for the record, please?
Yes, eighty-two Pond Street.
Thank you. And what compelled you to apply to this committee?
I've been coming to the Open Space Committee member meetings as an interested member of the community and have been active helping them with passing the plastic water bottle ban. And in my career, I've advised open space committees for the town of Dedham and the town of Brookline. My career has been in the environmental field as an environmental educator and a sustainability director for the past twenty-three years. So I've helped to draft Brookline's open space plan as well as Dedham's. And this is just a field that I'm really interested in and I, I really have enjoyed the committee and the members of the committee and would like to be a part of it. But if, as per the earlier conversation, I would defer to the existing members for reappointment and I'm happy to just continue to come as an interested member. I wouldn't want to take their spots. Or Deirdre's, if there's some confusion and she wasn't able to be here tonight, that's, I'll leave it at that.
Okay, thank you very much.
Again, I need to say that as co-chair of the committee, and I did receive the emails from Tracy, I believe, that did alert us that, that my term was due for reappointment, as was Marissa Manley. But I do not recall that Deirdre Riley's term was due to be up. So if so, I mean, maybe that was just a gaffe, but I certainly would have reached out to her for clarification.
Okay, thank you very much. So, okay, so to my colleagues, do we want to, how do we want to handle this? Do the reappointments and then select from the remaining two for this open seat? Mr. Frog?
I personally would like to defer until we've clarified what the exact openings on the committee are.
Mr. Senior?
So when this was recreated five years ago, four years ago, we had to scramble to figure out, every town could be, every town can do what it wants. So we went back to the original appointments because the committee had lapsed. Make it recreate it, so. There is a recreation commissioner, there was a recreation commissioner, a conservation commissioner, again, I believe, a planning board rep as well. And again, the board can raise the number of seats, just like Mr. Kirst came and made a recommendation to change. The other thing is that this committee is, again, it's going into, starting next year, it's going to be going through a, a new cycle to refresh the open space plan. So that said, there's still time to get the committee set before that happens. And as a desire to add an associate member to the board, I consider that. So that committee can function well during its deliberations on the plan.
So would be your recommendation, then, that we defer any appointments until the completion of the existing plan and the commencement of the next plan or defer?
What I'm saying is, I think that you, you want to have the committee fully functional to go into the plan.
Into the next plan, okay, okay. But we need more clarity on existing members, when their terms are up, and how many people are on it, and who these representatives are, correct? Planning Board, Rec Commission, Conservation.
The names are correct on both the website and this database. The only difference is that Deirdre Riley's planning, in the database, it does.
Okay, all right, so I agree with my colleague, Mr. Frog, that we need more information on this, on the composition of this committee. How many seats are open and what the terms are?
I'm sorry, but I mean, I'm quite up to date on that information as it was provided to be by Tracy.
We need to make sure that in our records, we have everything accounted for properly and that all of the applicants that are, want to apply have had the opportunity to apply. So we're going to defer this tonight.
This is Ginny LeClaire.
No, I think, Mr. Creighton, are you in agreement with deferring this?
I think it needs to be deferred. There's too much confusion. It's a, so defer.
Okay.
May I ask?
No, no, no.
The question.
Committee, no, the Select Board is deliberating right now, please.
I didn't mean to. I love her to talk, but what it says is, is that I think it's just a matter of housekeeping to just clean up who should be on the boards and when some of the terms ended, because there was change a couple of years ago and there are members of other committees that belong to it. And for the consideration of the people who put in their applications, we do have a number of talented people who have put in including Virginia, who has worked on an open space plan before, which would be very helpful to the committee. So I think we should just rectify to make sure we've got the rec number of slots open and then go from there.
Yeah, okay. So do we need to vote to defer? No, okay, so we're going to defer.
And I'm happy to talk to Ms. Afshar this next week, just to clarify where we are on this. And if her recommendation is to ask the Select Board to add another couple of members on.
Sure.
Put that into formats and you can take a look at it.
Sure, okay, all right. So we're moving on to the last one. Zoning Board of Appeals, two open seats. And we had an email from Mr. Chiddick requesting some changes to the to the composition of the zoning board of appeals. Is that correct?
Yes, and it's a little. Yes, and it's a little.
It's a little complicated, isn't it?
Yes, yeah, 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 what is it?
Here's, here's the.
Yeah, I, I have it here. Um, okay. Yep, yep, so I will read Mr. Chittick's email of Thursday, May ninth, twenty-twenty-four to uh former select board chair, Jean Haley Dipold. Um and uh I don't know these people in coffee, so I'm not going to comment on them. Okay, the subject is zoning board reorganization. Uh, to Jean, this is coming from me, Woody, as the ZBA chair to you as a select board chair and should be reviewed by your board at an upcoming public meeting. When appointment time rolls around in June, the ZBA would like your board's approval of the following. I, Woody Chittick, would switch terms and status with Matt Watkins. I will become an associate member, filling Matt's term, which expires next year, twenty-twenty-five. Matt will then become a regular member of the board, completing my term, which expires in twenty-twenty-six. Dave McMorris, our vice chair, whose term expires this year, is willing to be reappointed for another term and is willing to serve as chair of the ZBA if you agree. Charlie Higginson would like to retire this June, leaving one year left on his appointment as a regular member. We would propose that Lee Darst, whose term expires this year, be appointed a regular member, filling Charlie's remaining one-year term. We have no particular person in mind for the remaining associate position, but would like to work with HR to review, interview candidates since internal compatibility is desirable. Um, I, Woody goes on to say, I've been on the ZBA for just about forty years, probably well past my quote best if used by date, and fresh perspectives are always valuable. I'm initiate, initiating this to ensure a soft transition. My colleagues on the board are to a person exemplary. Partial change to my email, Charlie Higginson has decided to fulfill his term in the ZBA and plans to retire in June of twenty-twenty-five rather than this year. Okay, I've spoken to Lee Darst and she's fine with this change. My swap with Matt Watkins is unchanged, so we would do we need to vote to switch from an associate member to a member and vice versa?
Hasn't happened before, so uh, the, the, the appointments are easy, so Mr. McMorris and Darst are easy. Uh, you just reappointed them to the three of them, as well as a full member.
Yeah.
I would ask if you do that, that'll keep the board set.
Okay.
I think I really would, I, well, it sounds simple, I think I'd really rather have council be sure, because screwing up the BZA probably would be a very bad thing and, and I, I, I want to make sure it's on the line. So.
Okay.
I understand what is, what is goal, I just want to make sure that that can be done.
Right. Com- comments?
Yeah, I don't know about how moving them from a regular member to an associate, but I know, at least with that, if we're gonna move them up, we would have to certainly move them for that, but we can certainly let council look at that of what the switches, and I would say um to the members of that board, uh for, for Woody, who's been at this for so many years, the town owes you beyond a debt of gratitude for all of the years that you've put in on the zoning board with the tough uh decisions they've had to make uh with all sorts of lawyers and litigation coming at you and the same thing for Charlie Higginson, for all of his years of service, to thank him as he uh goes into his last year as well, so thank you for your service.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, so can I have a motion to uh reappoint David McMorris and Lee Darst? Oh, Jack, I'm sorry, Jack, give a comment.
Uh, yeah, I would, first of all, uh echo David's comments, the zoning board of appeals, it's one of the most challenging boards in, in town government. It has served this town very, very well because zoning is what protects our town and allows the town, has set its destiny, is very difficult to enforce it. So kudos to, to them. Um, I think probably just off the top without the best way to accomplish this is for people to uh clearly resign their position and then have the select board reappoint them to the new position. That removes all, all questions about it, it's very clean and easy to do, but I, I would do, I would support their proposed kind of reorganization. I would just do it, resign what you have, select board appoint you to the new positions, et cetera, and so on. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so uh, I'll get back to requesting a motion um to reappoint David McMorris and Lee Darst to the zoning board of appeals.
Second.
I need someone to make the motion.
Some moved.
Okay, so Mr. Creighton made the motion, Mr. Grady seconded. All in favor, roll call, please.
All ready, I.
David Farag, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. Okay, and regarding the uh email and reorganization of the existing zoning board of appeals, I'm gonna defer to Mr. Senior to speak with town council and hopefully town council's solution is as um clean as Mr. Creighton articulated in terms of resolving this. And that, um, we are now done with all of these appointments. Okay, next up is the select board goals vote to adopt. Um, we reviewed them at the last meeting, I added a bit of a preamble. Um, and if anyone has any comments, I'm happy to have edits, critiques. Anything? Done? Okay, um, do you think I should, we should read it or no?
Yes, yes.
Okay. So the Cohasset Select Board developed the below goals in recognition that the FY twenty-twenty-four completed goals required ongoing support and follow-through. We also recognize as stewards of our community assets, we must develop a comprehensive plan for all of the assets. We must support our facilities in DPW departments with funding and strategies to repair and maintain our infrastructure while working in conjunction with our colleagues on the capital budgets and advisory committees. First goal is forty-one Highland Avenue to establish a working group of stakeholders to investigate all options relative to forty-one Highland Ave. Next is one thirty-five King Street to continue um the work to convert that to the Cohasset Public Safety Building. The third is Cohasset Asset Ma- Management, establish comprehensive current conditions analysis of all town-owned buildings and a maintenance plan. Uh, looking forward, open space and recreation initiatives, receive open space and recreation committee updates as they enter the final year of their five-year plan, plan ribbon cuttings, which we have one tomorrow for the Beechwood Playground and the tennis courts. Begin to look at phase two, phase two, what is next for Cohasset Recreation? Are we gonna look at pickleball, the baseball field, or the backfield at the middle high school? Develop budget and plan for maintenance and develop plan for uh water filling stations in conjunction with the private entities to support the ban on single-use plastic water bottles. Boards and committees, everyone witnessed some of it tonight, promote to the community the opportunities to serve. Going to continue our zoning bylaw reform and hopefully our zoning bylaws will be um completed and redone for special town meeting in twenty-twenty-four. Um, and environmental issues, stay abreast of current PFAS conditions, issues and remedies, and review coastal flooding and resiliency concerns and remedies. So, okay. Any discussion? No, okay, can I have a motion to approve the goals for twenty-twenty-five?
I'll make that motion.
May I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor, roll call, please.
All ready, aye.
David Farag, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. Thank you all very much. Okay, select, um, the next thing is town hall working group. Um, in your packets was a first draft of our goal number one, which is forty-one Highland Ave. And um to talk about the town hall, the working group. So we all recognize that we have to come up with a plan for forty-one Highland Ave and where our seat of government will will be, and we've talked about a working group, which Mr. Senior has advised that, that um we can put together with a charge. So we articulated that it would be seven to nine members led by a select board member, which Mr. Grady has volunteered and have stakeholders with varied experiences and skill sets. The group will be charged with investigating all options for final resolution of improving conditions at forty-one Highland Avenue if they'll, if viable to do so. We'll also investigate all town-owned properties and opportunities, move some or all municipal services to existing vacant spaces.
Excuse me, sir.
We'll get into a lot of detail on that. The output of this group will be to present to town meeting twenty-twenty-five a final comprehensive and affordable plan for forty-one Highland Avenue. So um, that's just the first draft. Um, I did reach out to our attorney um to talk about how we would um support um if we had a cultural group, which we cannot call the cultural, Cohasset Cultural Council, as Mr. Senior advised me, there's already one in existence. So they have to come up with another um town name uh or a committee name. Um and uh that concept would be converting forty-one Highland Avenue to a um, into condominiums, so that they could purchase one side and the town would retain ownership of the annex side. Um yes, go ahead, please.
Just with what you were saying, uh just for people home, that when you say condominiums, you mean uh just the ownership uh of it and not actual residential units.
Not, not residential units, no, no, splitting, splitting forty-one Highland Ave into, much like one Pleasant Street was, was put into a, a condo concept. Um, Chris, you had some comments?
Uh, yeah, one of the cultural council.
Okay.
So uh, I, I'm also, I, I, I think it would be helpful if, if there was some regular check-ins that were scheduled, just because um, this is gonna be very publicly, not only a publicly important project, but one that was kind of on, like it too, so uh it would, but you might, you don't have to schedule formally, but I think when you've had boards to do this. Um, I'd also just recommend that, that, that the, the committee, this, this working group start by gathering what we're gonna have, that's so much work. I mean, so much work's been done. Someone's got to be refreshed for no, without question, but it would just, I think, jumpstart some uh to have some that together, so you can also, we curate that, I think we've done, I think Michelle's done a lot of curating.
I've spoken to Michelle about it, so we've got the people that are technically coming on the group so far, so we shall finalize, set up meetings, that kind of thing. And get the ball rolling, so yes, Michelle presented value. Already done so far for town hall.
And then if, if uh, if there's a benchmark, we may need some more funding, do some kind of analysis. It would be good to have something by early fall, so we could put something in the town, we need to use for cash, so just another benchmark.
Okay.
And I think uh for the record, that the name of the group that was out there working on it was the Cohasset Cultural Center. That was the, the name, not the, not the council, but are they still in business? Uh, the, the, the group that was.
Cultural thing that you said that you couldn't name it?
Well, yeah, the cultural council actually.
Cultural council's a town, yeah.
But they, you read the group that got together of all the organizations that was kind of.
That we met with, with um.
Oh, that, yeah, I, all right.
I've been calling them the Cohasset Cultural Council, which I cannot, because the count, that council exists, it's a state.
Oh, I get.
Affiliated Cohasset Cultural Council, so we call them something else other than council.
So we gotta come up with a name, I mean, town hall working group kind of rules nicely up the top.
Right, but in terms of identifying them as an entity, a party process, I mean, they're gonna have to organize anyway, they're gonna have to have incorporate, you know, documents and things incorporation. Um, so is there, so other than the, the three points that Mr. Senior pointed out, is there anything else on this first draft, because I'd like to bring it back to the next meeting? Um, and also seek board approval to have Mr. Grady, he's starting to, um, he's got almost everybody recruited.
Recruiting.
Recruiting for, for this working group so that they can get started. So that they can get started. Is there anything else? To the document, no changes?
No.
You guys are easy.
You can get a cast, you can get a chest of down, so Kevin McCarthy, you grab.
Yeah. So I think what Mr. Senior brought up, um, I think is important, I think having regular check-ins, um gathering the existing work and then we'll see if there's benchmark funding. Mr. Creighton, any comments?
No, I just think we need to be very, very careful on this, there's been several working groups previously who've worked very hard and have gone down in flames, um, a lot of hurt feelings. So we should be very, very careful, but I think at this point, I'm cautiously optimistic in that people realize there's a certain reality that we all are now share. And this is a time to get this done. And, and I think it's important, the cultural group, and it's very important that Glenn Pratt's group and some of the other people on there are intimately involved in this, because I think in my opinion, one of the crucial things that will make this successful is hiving off the auditorium into a nonprofit to can handle that part of the town hall at a third the cost, by the way. Um, and then we'll have to deal with how we deal with, with uh, with the annex. But I think we're making some progress. Let's not uh slow down.
Okay.
That's one comment, I, I thought the working group, the, the draft of it is, is great to get going to hopefully with the, the town hall issue uh to rest once and for all. Uh, and it's been many years and, and I was on the first committee way back in two thousand eight. I was a lot younger and a lot thinner then, I'll tell you that, but it's a, but with, with the group that's going, uh hopefully uh the result will be to preserve uh the historic end of town hall and make it functional again uh for all the citizens of the town. Uh, so they can enjoy it like most of us did when we were growing up in Cohasset, so hopefully that'll be the result, but I know it's gonna be a long journey and this is gonna be the first step.
Excellent.
I'm actually excited about the people so far who want to come on, so.
Okay, so in order not to have the working group wait for a vote for our next meeting, um, with the board's permission, we can adopt this with the corrections and additions as we've articulated tonight. If that's acceptable, unless, unless you want to see it written. I mean, I'll distribute it as soon as I'm finished typing it, but.
Yeah, I feel comfortable with moving on if there, if there's something that needs to be amended as we go or as new information comes in, we can always amend uh the, you know, the charter for the working group.
Okay, so just to re-articulate the changes, um, in points two and three, I'm gonna strike council, Chris, and I'm just gonna put group.
Seven, center, I call them just the center.
The center, okay. I will strike council and put center. I will add regular check-ins with um, and I'll be a bit more articulate with select board. And, you know, we should probably invite capital and advisory to those meetings. Gather the existing work to jumpstart the process and um that benchmark funding for special town meeting, analyze if there's any benchmark funding needed to appropriate a special town meeting twenty-twenty-four. Okay. Do I have a motion to accept this as amended?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, roll call, please.
All ready, aye.
David Farag, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. Great, thank you all very much. Okay, um, Mr. Senior?
Yes, quick issue, I distributed two versions of a schedule, one sort of a narrative and one was for a, just a poll of dates. Um, it would, it revolves around a special time meeting of December ninth, I just double-checked the calendar, Thanksgiving is very late this year. So if we did it on the second, we'd be literally coming out of Thanksgiving holiday right into special town meetings. So the ninth would give us time to, uh, so you'd basically be, you have to set the date by August twentieth. You can set it now if you're ready, but you can wait till the twentieth, and then we'll have a, the calendar will flow from there. Um, and um the recommendation is you'd open the warrant officially in September, it gives a one-week window for any uh citizen petitions. And um, and then you'd have the month of October basically to vet what's there. With an understanding that the really heavy stuff, like zoning stuff's already in progress, that's already actually happening. Anything really heavy like that, it should probably start as soon as possible. Uh, just because it won't be enough time to vet, uh, and that'll give us time, the zoning to schedule forums.
Right.
And I, I'm, I'm already meeting with uh Cassandra, I've heard it with Cassandra, planner, to go over the budget and we're talking to town council shortly about how to plug that.
Okay.
And, and there's only two other, two other things to note, it's, it's these two Thursdays, because the primary is the third and the election day is the fifth, those are normally dates that order that. The election day is the fifth, those are normally dates that order that can't. So I I recommend you go to third, that was in the calendar, that you go to Thursdays that week, those two weeks, it may be. Or a different day, but you can't do it Tuesday. Um and the 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 November meeting would be, if you push it all the way to the end, that'd be the last time you can make a change. Would be November seventh or sixth if you do it on.
Okay, so Thursday, September fifth would be our regular. Meeting instead of Tuesday, the third of September.
It's already in your.
Okay.
The fifth was. Seventh.
Might have conflicts on those Thursdays in the fall, so. Day might.
Wednesday? What can you, can you check?
Yeah, I'll check if we can hold it the next meeting.
Okay, I I think what's important now is if we just decide on December ninth, right?
Because everything else flows out of there.
Uh everyone else, everything else flows.
Other dates, we also want to check if Chris too will use that.
Yeah, just make sure this works for all, so.
Yeah.
Yep, okay.
But we can at least do some.
Yeah, alright, so does anyone have any comments about December ninth for special town meeting? Nope, okay, can I have a motion to approve uh December ninth for Cohasset Special Town Meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Grady, second?
Second.
Mr. Farag, all in favor, roll call, please?
Oh, Paul Grady, aye.
David Farag, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
L M R, aye. Okay. And so then um Mr. Farag is gonna check those Thursdays and he had a good point to check with Mr. Flex. On his schedule, okay. Okay.
Michelle. Uh to do a quick update on projects, if you'd like.
Yeah.
Sure, yep.
Hi.
Hi, Michelle.
So um so a quick update on the project, so um. Beechwood Playground, as you know, tomorrow we're having the groundbreaking for the ceremony for the children of the community, we have over sixty five children signed up. To attend the groundbreaking, um we have something special planned for them, so that's exciting. Also, we spoke to Chief Quigley and he's gonna help us um mitigate any parking issues that we may have in the area. Um so that event is planned, it'll start, it'll kick off at noon, we're hoping it'll be quick, only because the kids' attention span is very. Um very short, so it'll be short and sweet, but we do want to recognize that this is for the children. Um the playground installation will begin next week, it takes approximately two weeks to install and that is just the equipment. Um the poured in place rubber will follow once the basketball court has been um. Torn up and um in ground in place, so they don't want to do anything to um. Hurt the the poured in place rubber, so that's that's gonna follow. Um as far as Millican Tennis Courts, that has already begun as well. Um the tree subcontractor was on site today, um they were doing some tree trimming and tree removal. Um also, all the erosion controls were put in place today. Um and they will continue to mobilize additional equipment over the next few weeks um for another successful project. Um one thirty five King Street. So we went through the O P M qualification process, um we did choose an O P M, um it is P three. They have begun working, we're negotiating contract terms with them now. Um we are already working to get a designer on board that has been advertised. And August first is the walkthrough for all designers interested in the project. Um and that designer selection bid is due on August fourteenth. Um from there, it'll be approximately a couple of weeks until um we choose the designer and then comes September. Um we'll have someone on board and we'll begin the process of space planning. And moving forward with both one thirty five King Street and sixty two Elm Street.
So what time is the walkthrough on August first?
So August first, it's at ten A M at one thirty five King Street, and as soon as that's completed, we'll follow to sixty two Elm Street.
Okay, thank you. Very exciting. It's very exciting stuff, thank you. Any comments or questions from anyone on the board?
Other than I I can't wait for the uh for the King Street project, the new police station to get going and. It's uh crucially important to the town and I know it's gonna take a lot of time and design and everything, but looking forward to to having it happening and hopefully. When it's finished.
Yeah, ditto, yeah.
I'd also like to comment on uh Beechwood, thank you, well done, Michelle. The long suffering residents of Beechwood have looked with uh some degree of skepticism. As we in the town have attempted and now are successfully implementing getting things done. For a somewhat neglected part of the community and um I thank those residents for their patience. Sometimes their impatience was um pointed, shall we say? But we are moving forward, this is a case where a very difficult pledge was made to them a number of years ago. And after a while, they didn't believe it, well, now we're seeing that the pledge that this. And previous select boards made to Beechwood that we would do something and continue, we're showing that we're following through. And again, I think we should um thank them for their patience. And I'm very proud that the town has been able to come through for Beechwood, thank you.
Alright.
Michelle, I'd just like to say thank you very, very much, alright, this is a project that we started last year. Work like dogs and you. More than anybody have done a yeoman's job in piecing this all together. So um I just wanna say thank you and I'm sure that people over in Beechwood and any one of the kids coming enjoy that park are gonna thank you too.
Please be sure to take lots of pictures tomorrow. Okay, thank you, um Mr. Senior.
Um so I will move on to the Preserve, so uh we've we've had some conversations about the Preserve uh. Uh during the course of the year, so um I wanted to have a quick update, so. It it was a bit of a challenge to get engagement with the owner, the owner is True America, it's a company out of Los Angeles that owns. All around the country, the Preserve is the first Massachusetts property actually acquired, uh and they've now since bought a couple of others. And um.
Um Chris, sorry.
Do you want the phone?
I got it. You just sit right here.
I don't know, I don't know if it's on, because is it? It's on, okay.
Now it's.
Now it's on, okay.
So as I was saying, the owner, the ownership group is uh is out of the West Coast, uh True America and the property managers that Gray Star. Uh that said, the agreement uh that created the the property and and we set up the affordable housing. It's still in in effect, that rolls, that continues whoever owns it. Um after some research into this, uh the 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 town's. Lever on rent, it has to do with utilities, so we have to, we have to give an approval every year. Um and and what's allowed, because they're affordable units, something called the utility offset, which which. Uh there's a computation of what people have paid for gas, water and electricity and and that's a lot to be deducted from the rent. Um when the property was first set up, I I read the documents, the utility offset was about four hundred dollars something. Uh which uh seemed seemed high, but but what, you know, I I don't know what it was based on. Uh when I looked at this last year, uh they they were, the the property owner was using a Hingham. Section eight rent of about a hundred and thirty bucks a month. It seemed relatively realistic. At number one, Hingham has a municipal utility. Uh which is much cheaper than national rent and their water rates are different too, we have. Because of the investments, we have more expensive water rates and I I questioned it and we've gone back and forth. Um uh that said, we finally had a big meeting about this with the state and the uh and the property owners and they've agreed to reconsider it, because we actually had another data point. Uh there's a, the affordable units uh at the train station down there are also regulated the same way. And their utility offset is high, uh so we said, well, this is another data, I think they should at least use this. So they're they're in the process of of adapting, so I think that will give all all the tenants some addition offset. From their, which is a good.
Uh yeah. And your retro activity there?
I've asked.
Since they've been playing um Hingham uh games?
I I've asked for that, for sure, it's going, I I can't, we can't force that, the state could, but I I've asked. At the very least, we'd go parack, they would go full going forward. But I've asked for that to them to consider doing it retro, because I again, I don't think the section eight rents, uh the section eight. Hingham numbers were realistic for Cohasset.
They have their own municipal water and electricity.
Right, right, so I I and that's the point, so um. The good news is that the property owner is now in conversation. Uh and the state for the first time, so we we started a conversation and hoping to continue, this is the beginning of that conversation. Um and I hope to have a a a new number, sure. Um secondly, so we've been working with multiple departments on this, so another issue that came up was inspections. Um the town has never had a lot of rentals, uh other communities that had rentals have a much more robust rentals inspection schedule, so typically. For for us, it would be if someone called, there was a real complaint, we'd go, but otherwise, there was not regular inspections. In other communities, uh it's often when the when the tenancy changes, there's an there's an automatic inspection to ensure the unit is. Stuff, which makes a lot of sense, so Pam uh Fay, our our health director, worked with council. And and looked at some other neighboring communities that had these and the Board of Health is now considering a. A an inspection, uh inspection regulations of this. That will allow an a a inspection anytime as a tenancy change, which will allow to to ensure that the units are actually not just affordable. Any unit is actually standards. So that's, that's an important element, uh which we we didn't even, which which this is something covered, so it's it's going to. Uh increase the responsibilities of the health department, that said, with this regional grant we're doing, I think we're gonna be able to have an inspector come in into. And there'll be fees as well, so the property owners will have to pay a fee for the annuals, for the, they're not annual, but they're tenancy change.
They'll be paying Cohasset.
Correct, yeah, because it would be our our regulatory setup. Uh that I expect will happen later this summer, um the Board of Health will have a public hearing on those proposed regulations. There there's been a series of concerns raised by individual tenants and we've been able to address some of them. Through our elections program, through our senior programs, and again, through the Board of Health. And we have our our social worker as well, a part of, as part of the regional brand, who's been able to work with tenants, um. We've also plugged into our state representative's office, that said, it's it's pretty clear that. Creating some kind of a resource so we can help people plug into it until it's out there, we we have a very limited window that we can we can regulate. Uh that said, there's a lot of, the state has has regulatory authority in a lot of other areas and there's private groups that will help with a variety of things, whether it's. Rent increases or any of this, there's other advocates, so we want to make sure there's a resource we can share and 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 really plug people in and. We're working on that, I hope to have that done fairly soon, so it'll be a, you know, it'll, we'll have something up on the website, but it'll be something that'll be available. Resources, so people know, you know, where to go, whether it's the Attorney General or the Office of Fair Housing. Uh things of that sort. And.
We can get that up to the residents.
Yes, we want to, and and so, and it's also, we've also discovered, you know, the the. The, when we had the problem in uh Hingham with the water system. We only had, we had the three hundred units of class and no one was getting contact, not not this, now they've they've kind of improved their communication. But one of the things we also realized that the 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 folks at the Preserve, it's the single largest concentration of people renters. Are not direct customers of the class of ours, so if we had any trouble, they wouldn't necessarily be getting notifications either. So we need to figure out a way to make sure that the residents up. The the Preserve are getting regular communication, so also reverse nine one one, right, we or or. Rave, is that what it's called now, right, rave, our our new emergency communication system. We want to make sure that everyone has access, so we usually send out the water bills, which reach pretty much everybody in town, right? And we have the residents in North Class and covered, but for a place like the Preserve, they're not, they're not customers, so we have to make sure we're getting. Information, so they can sign up for again, again, if we have an emergency notification. Uh out from the town, everyone will have access to that, so it's it's been. Helpful for us to to rethink how we communicate with residents. So I I think that's a, been a positive evidence, that said, we also have the ability to ask questions. Uh to ensure that the the regulatory agreement is is being followed. Um and we're gonna, we're we're in the process of drafting some questions for the for the folks at the Preserve to answer about. You know, how are they managing the units, for example? The um the affordable units are are not theoretically locked to a particular address. Um they should theoretically float within constant, uh within, if 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 I'm renting and I leave. And afford, it may not be affordable, the next person may be a regular, uh you know, a full prime, a a non-affordable tenant. But another unit then becomes available, so you know, there's a, this is this is a regular turnover, so um and. We've really never had the cause to look into that and there's been some reports that we have to investigate further, that some units may have been. Kind of locked in, that you know, I'm making up a number, right, one oh one has always been the affordable. And I may not have the up-to-date appliances, things like that, which they're supposed to have, and if you're in there a long time, there's no obligation to give you the fanciest of appliances, but once a tenancy turns. If they're gonna upgrade the unit like they would for any other unit, they should be doing it. Regardless of who's gonna do that, and um. And you know, there there's been no allegation that folks at the Preserve do anything wrong, uh we just want to make sure that everything's being done. So uh we've opened up those lines of communication up and we'll continue to engage with them. Uh and uh and hopefully. We'll make some progress. Continue.
So do we have a schedule and we're gonna meet with this True America, I mean, you said they're finally coming to the table? And from what I understand about them, they've been noticeably reticent, two-step to the table. Matter of fact, invisible.
So they had that, in fact, the state had had trouble getting to the table as well, so this last meeting we had, the state called me immediately afterwards and said, well, that's a big breakthrough. We're actually in communications, so um and that's the state office that manages these these programs, so. Um I'm 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 hoping to continue a regular dialogue, so we stay in touch, but one of the challenges that. It it didn't just affect us here, is that. The the pandemic, during the pandemic, rents kind of froze, they just did. And uh and also some of the data for the census was delayed, when all of that came through. Uh that you know, the new the new data and 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 any of the COVID era restrictions on rent increases were lifted. Massachusetts is not a what regulated state, the affordable units have to be tagged. But they can, you know, i- i- if there's a rise. A large rise, there's a large rise, and and that's that's a flaw in the state system, it's nothing that we can really do about that, now, we did raise the equity issue, so I said. Interesting, you can do it, that said, is there some way you can look at this a little differently, I mean, if someone's in a in a unit. And um and they're there. Because it's affordable, that's what what makes it possible, to have a gigantic rent increase may be legal. But it's hard to swallow, uh and and it's, is there something that can be done and there was no. There's been no. So that that that's been raised by the state and us, uh and and they're not obligated to do anything like that, other managers sometimes do that. Um to to, you know, the rents will still go up, but that they'll go up a little more. A little more slowly to catch up to where they can get to, uh so we're 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 gonna continue to press that. I I'm more than happy to invite them to a select board meeting, they are the single largest property in town, they contain. Most of our affordable regulated units are in that property, both the literal fifty five. And the two hundred and twenty that count towards our forty B because they're, so I'm happy to a- a- ask them to come to the future.
That'd be good.
Yeah.
And also, uh so I just, just to clarify, so say we have a person up there. Who's told they have to move by September, I'm being hypothetical, but they're in a unit, they want to move into another unit. Because unit that bursts in, for some reason, more attractive to respective. Person coming in. Now. Can they just up and move like that?
That that should, that 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 should, those kinds of scenarios shouldn't be happening. Because again, the the affordable units are not supposed to be, and I hate to use this word, segregated, right, they're not supposed to be segregated, it's affordable. They're supposed to float within the building, it doesn't matter, I mean, somebody could be there a long time and then I get that the unit gets turned over. Um and it and it could be affordable at some point, it could be not, so one of the questions we want to ask them is, okay, just give us a history of. We we don't need to know the tenants, we don't have a right to know.
Right.
Tell us the history of the unit, right, as a. How how are the, how where have the tenancies been that are affordable? Uh and uh again, I I the 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 True America is a fairly new owner, they've only acquired, they've only taken the property in the last couple of years and. Um and and. We've we've made no accusation, they've made no promises, the same times, and understanding, it's clear in the language of the. The agreement that set up the the property, that that the units are supposed to. Float, they're not, they're not set to any particular building location, so it's something we need to continue to follow. Make sure that's not.
That would be nice enough, just to get a. That would be nice to know, just to get again, if uh Mr. Mrs. Jones are living in unit one and told arbitrarily, they gotta use to unit twenty-two because it's way down, you know, in the back of the lot.
A less attractive unit, yeah, it doesn't.
Someone wants unit one.
Okay, um Mr. Farag.
I've got a couple of things on, when it go, on number two, when you number one, uh dealing with the the utility offset, I I hear you on that. We'll just have to see where that goes. On number two, with the inspections of the rentals and looking at other towns, I would suggest that we, and I know you've probably looked at it cuz it's one of the towns that has it, but it's strong to look at Hull because they, oh, I'm sure you did, but they have one of the the stronger ones. And with all the units they have, they're they're very adept at dealing with with rental units of different sizes and scopes and things like that. And you were talking about the Board of Health, but I know um and I don't have them off the top of my head, but I know with Hull, they also have the building inspector involved as well with inspections because the Board of Health can look at it regarding health code uh violations, but the building inspector can also look at it regarding, you know, the building code. Now granted, the units are somewhat um you know, they were built with the the building code at the time, but uh nevertheless, not just those apartments, but any others that might be in town uh to look at the regulations of of Hull vis a vis the building inspectors and not just the the Board of Health. I think that would be be helpful and hopefully.
So while while these these regulations are only to the tenancies, which I know that Hull has a requirement to inspect every apartment every year.
Yes.
Um because I've seen it that. Uh so that's not, this this doesn't go to that level. That said, the Board of Health can most certainly, you know, make it stricter, like I think the I think at the very least, at least when the tenancies change, to ensure the units are actually in good shape.
Could we adopt that?
No, the Board of Health is the regulator, has the regulatory authority here and they can do it directly. Um I mean, you know, you can most certainly communicate to the Board of Health and say, hey, we really like.
What I'm saying is that Hull can do it.
Oh, yeah, the, oh, class could certainly.
And you know, that we can get in there and inspect every unit as it goes and say, hey, you're missing a grab rail here. You're missing, you know, um.
And and to be clear, our 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 health director has gone out, calls as needed, she was just out recently and found water damage in an outlet and they had to get an electrician right in there and those mold issues. So town is 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 responding. It was actually an issue with the trash compact. She said, you gotta get this fixed. Now, the issue was people putting stuff in it that was chamois. People from furniture probably shouldn't have happened at the same time. That's the management company's responsibility to ensure that that continues to function.
I'm just saying something on an ongoing basis, not as ad hoc.
Okay, so can I, can I clarify that? Because I think we're talking, so when you proposed this, you were talking about a when a tenancy change, only only when an apartment turned over. Mr. Farag indicated that in Hull and as you agree, it's every single year regardless. And I think that's where Mr. Grady is going as well, that it's every single year regardless. So I just wanna be clear that we set the right expectation that it's either every single year regardless or it's only when there's a tenant change.
I I believe the register were, remember, there's still a draft, right? Was to do it when the tenancy changed. That said, I will follow back up with the health, the words, I've talked to select board, they really think you should look at annual inspections for all rents. Uh and I will pass that.
Okay.
I think, I think we're better, I think we're a little more well-served than than coming up, say, you know, someone moves, we'd look at that, but it should be an annual inspection. They should be prepared for it. They should deduct an.
And it's it's not, remember, we have other rental units too. It's not just.
So so it, so it, it can't just be the preserve. It's it's for, it's for everything. So we have to look at the scope of that and how it may or may not tax our resources.
That that was one of the reasons, I think, when we, when we initially had this conversation, that we don't do anything, right? Except we only respond as as call. There's no regular inspections. And I will, I will talk about, I I I think the state health grant, the regional grant we have might provide a little more resource uh that will help all of us. Cuz situant and hanging also have a and I and I think we're all gonna be facing and hanging was a lot more reclined than they used to. So I I yeah, so at situant as well. So um we may all be in the same boat, we should have standardized programs that we can support each other. So.
The the last, last point I had was is uh in in our packets in the last couple of weeks, we received and some of it might have been older information as well. Received a lot of information from some of the people from the preserve uh with some of the issues that they've had out there. And you know, I did read that cover to cover and it it's, it's very enlightening and very troublesome with some of the issues that have gone out there and 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 the town manager has gone over some of, some of those um without getting into some of the particular residents, you know, their uh their anonymity as far as what what was going on. Uh but we have seen it and and uh I think this is gonna be an ongoing discussion and we'll go from there. But I will look at some of the the regs myself. Like I said, I can't remember some of them off the top of my head, but and and the regs will be, you know, have public hearings regarding what should be done. So that will be for all Cohasset residents to see at the Board of Health as well.
If you have any to share, I'll be happy to pass it along to Pam.
You know, the uh had my hand raised for a while. The thing we have to be very, very careful is what we're really backdooring into is a regulatory authority which will apply to not just the preserve. It will apply to every rental unit in the town, including single families that are rented out. So when you propose these things, you need to think through, like in any series of reg- regulations, whether the the con con re- re- uh regulations or or open space. When we go forward, we need to be very careful that we understand what are the unintended consequences and that we're setting up a new government bureaucracy to regulate and control um basically private property. So we should be aware of that. Now, and when you do pass rules, they have to be clear. They have to be enforced properly, and that's why they have to be clear and reasonable uh rules. So they're enforceable, cuz if they're not enforceable, or if they're unfair, there'll be legal challenges. Then we have another bureaucratic nightmare. So we should think this through and we should also say that what we don't like about the um preserve and I haven't seen all the stuff they've done. I'm sure there's some things that are pretty egregious. But it's also gonna apply to the uh uh person down the street who owns a two-family. Where we're gonna respect their rental unit, their in-law unit every year. So just, we should be very careful. And I think we also, at this point, we ought to be communicating to the property owners um and the small landlords throughout the town. So they're aware that this kind of stuff is going on. Cuz let's remember, one of the most important affordable housing stocks is are this small um two and three family um landlords. So just be cautious. And I do think that we, at this point, it's very clear to me that some outreach needs to be made to the smaller uh landlords and property owners who are already in in town. So they know what's coming.
Thank you. Um I have a suggestion that might address some of Mr. Creighton's concerns about unintended consequences. Perhaps you could reach out to your counterpart in Hull who has been doing these annual and and see you know, the the good, the bad and the ugly of that, you know, whether they don't have enough staff or whether they happen or don't happen or um we don't have to reinvent the wheel. If it, if the wheel's working well, um we can, we can make our, some adjustments if necessary.
I think our 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 public health there's actually did a lot of inspections in Hull, so I think I can, we just talk here tomorrow.
Yeah.
And and see how that works.
But but to Mr. Creighton's point, I mean, in in Hull, it's not just high rises and and condos. And it it is, you know, multifamily homes that are being rented and how to, that's a very different dynamic than a large corporate entity and and um looking at that. I I don't know.
Would you like to uh have some kind of a joint meeting with the Board of Health at some point?
Yes.
Yes.
Reach out to the chair.
And I concur with Mr. Grady that I would definitely like to see True America come in. If they'd like to meet with us. And I was glad to hear you reached out to, you said our representative Moschino?
Yeah, we we've had both state senator, congressman, representative. Cuz there's resources that the state has that we don't have.
Okay. Okay.
Terrence Hill's office has fair housing, regulatory issues, enforcement of.
Okay, so I I think two of the priorities are getting these regulations drafted and then also getting the list of resources up. Any other comments?
I think it's a good start.
Mr. Pierce?
Just a quick question for the town manager. This uh was presented to us on our Affordable Housing Chair Committee um several months ago when they were required to report to the town. Um it was here in front of the select board uh with a a former uh chairwoman and um our representative, Joe Moschino. Um we were here to oppose the the rent increase. And at that time, I was asked to review the the agreement that they have with the town. Um the question I have is, um I believe that agreement ends in about a year or two. Um is what uh
the the agreement runs, as I understand it, the agreement runs I don't wanna say perpetually, but it runs.
Yeah, so I know uh perpetuity for the housing is there. Um but it was under our understanding, along with Jean Dipple, that the agreement that was presented to us had an expiration date. I don't know if there was a renewal.
Yeah, I I don't, I I will check that, Paul. I don't, I don't, my understanding is that there isn't, that the regulations are it's it's kind of local, it was local approval. Again, I wasn't here for that, but it actually happened. But I I've looked at the agreement too. I also asked counsel for some advice on this cuz, okay, you know, wading through this is not, it's not as simple. Uh the town has the ability to look, but not to direct. So we can ask questions to make sure things are happening. Uh but again, we don't have control over the rents themselves. There's a peg, right? But though that, tho- those elements run. I don't, I don't believe this. I will double check. I don't think they really inspire.
The way that I understood the agreement is that they wouldn't have to come in front of the town to report once a year.
No, 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 they don't have to do that, but we can't.
Right.
But they do have to make reports to us at the state, so we have copies of that. There is a section in it, I don't remember the exact number of it. And we can seek information. We can make, we can seek information from the ownership.
Could we check and see if there's any expiration date?
I'll double check. I think I, I believe I sent all of you a copy of this.
Yeah, I read that.
You may not have, and I have to double check.
I can send you what I highlighted.
Yeah, I am. Okay, I appreciate it. Whatever you can send me, Paul, I'd be appreciative.
Great, thank you.
Great, thank you. Okay. Excellent progress. Um thank you, Mr. Senior, for jumping on this. That's an issue that's important to a lot of citizens here. Okay, uh moving on, any select board comments, Mr. Grady?
I'd like to just say thank you. This is a start to get paying this ball we're running. It's been a long time coming. Thanks to everybody that's applying for committee appointments. God knows we meet them. Um and thank you. And hopefully in a year or so, we get town hall wrapped up, the preserve wrapped up, and we had some of our problems behind us.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Farag.
Um thank you. I just wanted to uh thank, one of the things happens is uh in my short time on the select board, you become a select board member, you go out for tours in all the different facilities in town. And so I just wanted to thank uh, because I went to the police station, fire station and got a tour of all the uh physical infrastructure in the town with uh Brian Joyce uh in in facilities. So I just wanna thank uh Chief Quigley, Chief Doc Ray, and uh Brian Joyce for taking me around to see some of the structures. I have, I am familiar with a lot of them uh from doing the Cub Scout tours and the fire station, police station. But it's a little bit different when you go into the basement and some of the other uh spaces that you don't get to go. So that's a little bit more enlightening. But wanna thank everybody and um and look forward to serving on the board. Thank you.
Yes.
Question, my last, and I'll wrap it up on the preserve, just so some, just on your notes. Does any records we have a retaliation or anything like that there? Just wanna talk to those. That's all.
Sure.
Alright, if anyone's complaining, and that there is, I just wanted to add that to the mix and slip my mind. I apologize.
Mr. Creighton, any comments? You're muted.
You mute.
Just like to thank all the fine volunteers who've done so much work on our boards and committees. And thank you for your thoughts on consolidating things. Thanks.
Thank you. Okay, um I can't add add anything that my colleagues haven't already articulated. So we'll move on to approval of the minutes for July ninth, twenty twenty-four. Any comments? Edits or concerns?
No changes.
No changes, okay. Can I have a motion to approve the minutes of July ninth?
Go move.
Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay, uh roll call vote.
Paul Grady, aye.
David Frog, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. Thank you. There's no topics, not reasonably anticipated. So at nine twenty-six PM, I'd like a motion to adjourn, please.
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, by Mr. Grady, seconded by Mr. Creighton. All in favor, roll call, please.
Paul Grady, aye.
David Frog, aye.
Jack Creighton, aye.
Ellen Mar, aye. Thank you very much, everybody.